I am well. Thank you all for being here a little early so we can get out some very important public health awareness regarding the West Nile virus, Mr. Mayor. I think the press conference went well and we'll be vigilant over the next few days. We'll begin with an invocation, Mr. Mayor, if you like.
Please, Reverend McDonald, would you?
Oh, Lord, for all that you've done for us today, for all of the positive possibilities you've allowed us to share and be with us now as we gather around this table to discuss in a very sensitive way the needs of this city of ours, bless us all, we ask it in your name.
At this time, we would have a financial report if necessary, or Ms. Jan Alonso, to answer any questions regarding the May 2017 financial report. Being non, Mr. Mayor, we will move right into our city council discussion, which is a continuation of our healthcare matters. We have Mr. Kevin Bryant with the Aon Services South, Inc. He serves as resident manager and director of the South Carolina operations, and I know he has staff with him as well, Cindy's here and maybe a few others. So, Kevin, Cindy?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
What we want to do is give you an update. We promised that we would be back with some information and primarily to give you an update on what we, how the RFP is progressing. So, Malik, would you go ahead and hand out, we have some handouts for you, and you can follow along, take notes as we go through the schedule. Now, I'll be sure to turn this on so that it actually moves and advances upon command. So, my name is Cynthia McCartney, I go by Cindy, so either way, unanswered to vote. And let's dig right in. This here is our agenda, the, this is the very high-level view of the things that we're going to be talking about here on the first page, but if we want to go ahead and flip to page two, see if I can just go in the right direction. Where do I need to point this?
Was the clicker already on?
It's on.
It was already on.
Oh, it's, here's the expert. Hold it to green. Oh, there we go. There we go. Thank you, thank you. IT, thank you very much. First of all, in our discussions with the city manager and the human resource department, it came to our attention that we would address some, some of the costs that surround how you manage an employee benefit plan. So, we're talking about the medical administration and the pharmacy plans specifically. And in those discussions, we were talking about plan design changes and the things that we might do to the plan that will help control the costs going forward, because we have identified some areas that I'll point out to you in a few minutes about where, what's happening with your claim dollars and what might be behind that and driving that. So, but there's been a lot of focus on plan design as it relates to deductible co-insurance, co-pays, which plans you offer, how many plans you offer, and the thought is often and very commonly thought that that actually is going to deliver the kind of cost savings that you're looking for, when in reality, if you look at the driver behind your particular claim history, you see that forty-six percent of your claim cost is coming from claims over fifty thousand dollars. And I also have a slide to show you how that has changed over the 2015 to 2016 plan year. But the one thing that I wanted to mention to you is that when you're thinking of plan design changes, I want you to think of expanding what that actually is, because it's more than deductibles and co-pays. So, think of a fifty thousand dollar claim. You take your deductible and you raise it two hundred, five hundred, a thousand dollars. What are you paying? Forty-nine thousand, forty-nine thousand, five hundred. Okay, so the claim cost still remains with the city. As we start talking about that additional savings, it's really not going to impact the higher end and the significant cost to the city. So, we're looking at other opportunities to start with, right? Plan design changes are important as it relates to culture, lifestyle choices, choices on how you receive your healthcare. It's important, but it's not necessarily the very first place that we're going to look for savings for the city. So, for instance, we're going to be addressing meaningful care management. How do you handle those large-cost claims? That's going to be important as well. Centers of excellence, best practices, as it, as it relates to making sure that there are not duplication of tests, double MRIs, you know, those are some of the things that can be addressed. A specialty drug, and even general drug clinical oversight, that's going to be an important aspect, and it's going to be one of the first areas. Let me tell you, the first area that we are approaching right now has to do with the contractual provisions that impact pricing. And the reason we're going after that first, and that's the focus of our RFP right now, is because we've seen in the contract right off the bat, and Kevin is going to share with you, what this means perhaps dollars-wise, that's where your first significant savings is going to be. Kevin?
Correct. Cindy, would you, could you turn?
There we go.
And then I'll talk about the pharmacy.
Sure. The rolling twelve months, to give you an idea, there are several different ways to look at your claims and to aggregate them and compare them from year to year. One of the things that we're looking at in this particular slide is what we call, oh, I'm sorry, I touched it, is to look at the rolling twelve months, which is what your underwriters, the people who are going to price your plan, they're going to be tracking your plan on a rolling twelve. They're going to look at the most recent twelve months of claims in order to establish what appropriate pricing will be. So, that's what's happening here in this particular slide. So, we're looking at two periods of rolling, June, June fifteenth through May sixteenth, and June sixteenth through May seventeen. And let me point out is that, you know, it feels, we always say healthcare, but your medical plan over the past two periods is only trending at three-point-eight percent, so really virtually four percent, but your pharmacy is trending at thirty-two percent. So, once we see this, we see that even though we do have some concern for your high-cost claims on the medical, our biggest focus actually is going to be on your pharmacy, and that's where we're looking for this.
What about our administration costs?
Your administration costs are in addition to this, but they're going to be a very small piece, it's probably going to be under ten percent of the total. So, these are claims, but part of our RFP is to dig into those administrative, administration costs, so that's definitely going to be part of our focus.
Question to me really comes around rebates. Are we getting those rebates?
We're going to talk about that.
Yep, we're going to talk about that. Kevin, you want to move forward?
Yes.
I have a question, and y'all may get to this later too, and if so, then you can wait to answer it then, but one of the things I was thinking, this actually confirms one of the things I was thinking, at, we've talked a lot about our employee clinic and our wellness programs and being more preventative versus reactionary, and I took a class, I guess, or heard a speaker last week in about functional medicine, and they were saying how there's now a trend that there are some doctors who are being trained at the functional medicine, preventing things before they happen versus treating them once you actually have been diagnosed. And so, a lot of people are managing it more with their wellness programs, so I'm wondering it, would that percentage, of course, come down if we were able to do more wellness programs where we keep people off high blood pressure medication and, you know, off diabetes medication and other things like that?
Very definitely, that is something that you cannot ignore, okay? Because one of our, one of our analysis will be to look at your high-cost claimants, and that's something that we're going to accomplish after this RFP session, because we're looking right at the contracts and the providers, and then we're going to be looking at the well-being and help you put together and using and building off what you already have in place to actually promoting healthier lifestyles. It's a tricky question, but that's part of our project. Do you have a question?
Yeah, well, I would add to that. I think it's very important that we need to look at, at requirements. You know, we've done the wellness program before, and it worked, and we took people off medicines that were, that were spending five, six hundred dollars a month. Problem is, is we don't have a penalty signed in there if you don't take care of yourself.
That's, that's covered by some federal regulations that you have. You cannot necessarily penalize people for bad health.
You can for them not, not going to get their screenings and everything else. Yes, you can.
Yeah, well, we can provide them with incentives for doing that, so it's a matter of semantics, but you're right, it's just a matter of do we look at it from the glass half-full or half-empty, but you do have to be careful by, because of federal regulations on how you approach that. But those incentives are part of a well-designed wellness and well-being program, it's also part of your contribution strategy.
Is that a part of pre-existing, pre-existing things that might be a part of?
Smoking doesn't count as pre-existing.
Go ahead. Well, I don't know.
That's all right.
Yeah, no, and I guess what I'm talking about, it's not really pre-existing, but I mean, it, it can be like, if someone comes on and they're a staff person and they have diabetes, yes, that's a pre-existing condition, but there also can be things that contributes to that in their lifestyle, so if you, yeah, so if you encourage.
And that's part of the wellness piece then.
Right, if you encourage things, then they can maybe come off those medications.
But if they are a diabetic, or if they do have a ongoing disease, then your TPA's case management should be handled.
I didn't hear that last part.
If they are a diabetic or have hypertension or any other ongoing physical issue, then then your TPA's case management should be handled.
So, the pre-existing thing plays into the wellness piece?
Oh, definitely. You're, you're right on target. We want to, we want to get those who are making the bad lifestyle choices, but they have not resulted in symptoms yet, okay? So, those are your younger folks who feel they're, you know, they're not ever going to get sick. You have those who are in the pre-category, pre-diabetes, pre-hypertensive, they're on their way, we want to help them get a better handle on their health. And then, of course, we definitely want to have the appropriate treatment setting and oversight of those who are already in a disease state, we want to make sure that we apply to those. So, they're really kind of three buckets or three areas of focus.
So, there's nothing stopping us from screenings at the time of employment for the entire employee base versus just employees who may work in a certain, like, in the field or have certain jobs that require certain screenings as well?
So, you're talking about a pre-employment screening for health to come onto the plan? No, you cannot do that. That is against the law.
I just wanted to make sure they were not, that we were being clear about, about that.
Definitely. These are all methods and approaches that you use for your active employees, so to help them manage their health, and also, it's, it's, I think it's a part of just a caring culture about your employees. You want to take good care of them, sometimes that you need to help them along in making some of those good choices, through incentives or disincentives, however you want to define it. Okay, shall we move on? There's some exciting news.
Any questions? Okay, great. What Cindy showed you on, on the previous short was, was the difference in the pay increases between your major medical, medical claims and your pharmacy benefit claims. So, one of the things that, that we like to do at Aon is what we call our point of view, and one of the things that we like to look at for our clients first is their current contracts, just to see if their contracts respond, if they are competitive with the marketplace and with what we see in the marketplace. Aon controls twenty-five percent of the U.S. healthcare spend. We place about a hundred, a hundred billion dollars worth of healthcare premium on behalf of our clients into the U.S. marketplace. So, that gives us a lot of analytics, it gives us a lot of benchmarking, it gives us a lot of leverage that we can bring on behalf of our clients. And one of the strategic things that the city manager and the HR team did when they did the RFP is to select a partner that could really come in and address some of these issues for you. So, we have done that, and when, when we look at your pharmacy benefit manager, that is with a company by the name of Express Scripts. We've been contracted with them since two thousand and ten. So, what we did, we went directly to Express Scripts, and we've already negotiated a significant cost reduction with them on the city's behalf beginning in the plan year two thousand and eighteen. For instance, if you look at what makes up any organization's pharmacy charges, you have allowable charges, which are mainly the discount ingredient costs and the dispensing fees, you have the admin fees, and you've got the rebates, and I think that you had talked about the rebates. Well, right now, under the current contract with Express Scripts that the city has, city is only receiving three percent discounts, I mean, rebates from the pharmacy benefit manager. We've already negotiated a twenty percent rebate back to the city, so that's a seventeen percent swing.
Is that part of the, the lower discount because we're not taking advantage of the mail-in versus pharmacy? No?
No, no.
Does that have any impact on, on future?
No, no.
Not anymore.
Not anymore?
It used to, because now everything is consolidated, you have just a handful of these enormous pharmacy benefit managers. There used to be the development of warehouses, and they would be the volume discount, you know, entities that you'd do the mail order through. Now, all of the big, we call them PBMs, but the PBMs now own all of that, so the retail is as effective, if not more cost-efficient than doing the mail. It's more of a convenience, it's not that it should be taken out of your plan, it's no longer a cost-saving solution.
So, with your current PBM, we've been able to really bring about a significant shift in where the dollars are spent. We've already negotiated a thirteen percent reduction in the ingredients and the dispensing fees, we've negotiated a sixty-two percent reduction in the administrative fees that they charge the city, and again, we have increased the rebate percentage from three percent to twenty percent. And when you add those three components up, the allowable charges, including discount fees, excuse me, including the ingredients and the dispensing fees, and the admin charges and the rebates, you're talking about a two-million-dollar shift in savings guaranteed to the city using the same PBM with the same co-pays at each member.
That's a, that's a one-time.
No, sir, that is ongoing. That is ongoing, meaning the new benchmark will be two million dollars less. How did we miss that?
Well, we did that before, if you remember, when, oh eight, when we went and started forming everything out. The problem is, is we consistently need to be doing it on, on multiple years and not waiting long.
Now, that's on a standalone basis, your PBM, Express Scripts, is part of the Aon Pharmacy Coalition, and if you were to join our coalition, there's an additional six-hundred thousand dollars' worth of savings, because we are able to drive even lower cost than negotiating on a standalone basis.
Because of volume?
Correct, because of our discounted volume, yes. Because we have over two million members on our coalition, and our coalition's spend represents just under two billion dollars within the marketplace. So, when we aggregate that on behalf of our clients, we're able to deliver results like this. Every new client that joins our PBM has about a seventeen percent reduction in their pharmacy spend, so.
Well, once, I guess I, I struggle when, when you use the word from ongoing, because once you've reduced it, then you've got the base level, you're not reducing it again.
You still have trade increases.
Yes, correct, correct, correct. You have trade.
Right, it's significant.
But it's a one-time, but it's, what you're basically doing is that you're resetting every, and we continue to police it. Yes, correct.
So, if, if you were involved with your coalition, do you then, on a yearly basis, renegotiate those contracts?
Correct.
So, we're constantly benefit.
Yes, we do, yes, we do. And we have three different PBM on our coalition. Not only do we have Express Scripts, who the city currently utilizes as your pharmacy benefit manager, but we have CVS Caremark, and we have OptumRx. OptumRx is tied into United Healthcare, that's their biggest PBM, and CVS Caremark is, is Blue Cross and Athens' largest PBM. So, yes, so this would be an ongoing process where if you were to join our coalition, we would always look at one of these three vendors to hopefully produce the best-in-class pricing for you going forward.
And when you say join the coalition, what does that entail?
That means that instead of the city having a standalone PBM right now, you would join Aon's coalition to where you would have a fee for that, and we could talk about that later, but we just wanted just to show you what we've done on a standalone basis, and that's a two-million-dollar reduction off of current pricing.
It's, it's like signing up with another carrier. So, there's an implementation process, and you have application and ID cards and all of that. So, if you want to acquaint, what, what does it entail? It entails just like signing up with the Express Scripts.
Anything else?
Yeah, and I think I really like the idea of, you know, when you join a coalition, even when you go to the Express Scripts, often you find that there are some limitations in how you design your plan. Certainly, we have already in mind some patients that we would like to speak about, and we'll kind of talk about the order in which we're going to do this throughout our premier term of view. But honestly, when I think about, you know, plan design, plan directed, I think that's important, because, you know, there are aspects of your pharmacy plan that probably should be providing a higher benefit to those who are accessing their diabetes medication, their insulin, their high blood pressure medication. All of that is something that we want to make sure we don't create any barriers, but then, at the same time, we want to make sure that we have you in the right formulary, with the right, the separation of medications. All of that creates a customized approach that you get through joining, you know, a program like this. So, I think that that's going to be something that we're going to be able to bring a lot of flexibility along with the program. We have details on it, we just don't have the formalized proposal finished yet, because we're also waiting for some of the administrative vendors to submit some information. When we have all of that, we will have a formal proposal for you, and we can talk real numbers, but we just need to want to, the exciting news out.
And I actually, has actually signed off on it also, so it is actual based. Any other questions about what we've done so far to really move the dial for the city right out of the, right out of the gate?
Great start.
Thanks.
Real quick, we also, timeline. So, here's where we're at with the RFP, is that we began with the council in a workshop on August the fifteenth, and that's when we're going to do two finalists to compare to. So, it, I don't know, most likely it's going to be your incumbent and another competitor, and we'll bring a side-by-side comparison and be able to talk through, you know, the differences and what we see as being advantages and disadvantages between the two vendors. We'll also bring our formalized pharmacy proposal on the coalition.
So, we'll have three?
Pardon?
We'll have three.
It, it's separate, but yes, we'll be part of that. But you're right, that's a separate manager. And then, also, what we're foreseeing is that after that meeting, because it's a lot to digest, so you'll have something you can take back and study, we welcome questions as we move forward. We're hoping to have a final decision by the end of August, and we're happy to, we've been told that there's a possibility for an executive meeting at the end of August, the twenty-ninth is just a date that someone threw it throughout, but that way, we can then sit down, answer final questions, and have a vote.
Well, I think the date is based upon, there's a third, there's a fifth Tuesday in August. And so, we want to stay on this timeline to make sure we get open enrollment on time and make sure that you all begin to have the opportunity to start talking about plan design, although that wouldn't, those types of changes, and Cindy and those will talk more about this, really wouldn't be impactful until the following plan year. But there's so many more other things to move ahead as far as, you know, GASP discussions, pre-sixty-five, post-sixty-five retirement options. We want to stay on track in addition to a lot of the other work session items I talked with you about that could impact budget from a fiscal perspective with revenue generation and all. So, we want to, as much as we can, move, get the TPA in place, move the healthcare into some other items. If council wants to consider another meeting just to take up the potential respondent on the twenty-ninth, we could add that. You may feel like the time that we give it on the fifteenth is enough for you, I don't know, and then we could put the contract approval on for the first meeting in September.
Can we get the, the information, the options before the meeting?
Probably can.
Because I think that'd be helpful for a lot of us to be able to go through and have questions ready.
Okay.
As part of the presentation.
Watch.
Then certainly, you know, it'd be privileged, because it's contractual still at that point and negotiation period, period going on, but I think we can work with Kevin and Cindy and Legal to get you all something you could look at ahead of time.
And sometimes how that this works is, is a fluid process, because those competitors who know that they own one of the pharmacy.
Service.
Will continue to provide updated costs, so.
I've been down that rodeo before, so.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure that we meet council's expectations.
But we will, for the purpose of actually being able to make a decision, we'll have a deadline for the carriers, because sometimes it gets too fluid. So, eventually, you'll have to make a decision in time so that actually open enrollment can happen on time, and we can also get all the communication in place should there be a vendor change, and that's a question mark, that's not a given, okay? We're also working on stop-loss contracts as well, yes.
When are you going to get to the benchmarking?
It's coming, it's coming.
That's coming.
Yes, I have a little bit today, and I have, we have a tiny bit today, but I have other, and I'll explain why we postponed that a little bit, all right? Okay. We thought we would give you, I know that there was a request for some historical claim information, and this I actually took out of some work that Pam provided the council. Do you recognize this chart? Pam, we presented at a, at a past meeting I remember earlier this year, and so I did want to point out, this is one of the things that you're dealing with. This is total fiscal year, okay, healthcare costs, so they actually categorize it a little bit different.
Cindy, you hit it.
Oh, I'm sorry. There we go.
You get closer to that board.
I got to let go, I got to let go of that, oh, I see. Come and handle it, I'm sorry. You were doing quite well from two thousand and seven to the end of fiscal year two thousand and eleven, so your overall healthcare costs were trending at two percent. But then, if we look at the aggregate from two thousand and seven all the way through two thousand and thirteen, end of two thousand and thirteen fiscal year, you've got a thirty-seven percent increase. And you had a great big jump right there between the end of two thousand and twelve and the beginning of the fiscal year two thousand and twelve, thirteen. That one was twenty-four percent in and of itself, so it's just a huge, it's galloping away. Do you know what's happening is we've got healthcare reform that happened right in the middle of that. So, you have unlimited benefits that are now running through your stop-loss plan, you have caps on the out-of-pocket expenses, quite a few things were happening at the same time of many of the specialty medication releases, so that we know that there are some amazing new medications that can heal and cure, you know, things that have been plaguing people for years, and now they can create a curative state for those individuals. They're very costly. So, you're experiencing that right about that timeframe and moving forward, all right?
And, well, this isn't really a question for them. I, I think also when the question was asked about historical, the claims, and we've had some conversations among ourselves as to kind of the types of claims we've been having and how they've been going up, but I don't know if we've, any of us have ever, or all of us have seen that information. Pam, can you show us maybe over the last five years, like, the things that have been our highest claims, just specifically?
The cancer.
Yeah, well, that's what I was thinking.
I, I have some slides that might help.
We have a slide that will help.
I think that, I think this is, this is the last two years, not necessarily five years. And from an underwriting standpoint, although I think, you know, the perspective of what's happened with your history is important, as far as what's going to happen next year, because these are very short periods, because trend is moving so quickly and so fast, we usually look at twelve-month periods and then twenty-four-month periods. So, this particular look back, this slide is showing where your claim dollars are falling within your plan. So this particular look back, this slide is showing where your claim dollars are falling within your plan between 2015 and 2016. So we start over here at your left, and it's claim dollars over stop loss. So you had a big jump, and even though this isn't money directly out of your pocket, it will impact the cost of your stop loss insurance. So it certainly is something to keep, keep a mind of. Then we have between 200,000 and the 400,000 specific deductible that you have. You actually had a drop in that particular segment. But those spill over into your large claims and were reimbursement situations. We moved down the scale, 100,000 to 200,000, that remained steady. The concern is the one on the far right. The concern is the one, the claims between 50,000 and 100,000. You have this 38% increase there. And also, you have a huge jump in the number of claims in that category. So.
Can, did you mean by?
Yeah, Theresa knows what's, yeah.
What type of health conditions?
Yeah. Are there renal failures or what?
A lot of it's cancer.
Cancer. Yeah, that's what I, that's what I heard.
And it, and it varies from year to year, depending on the year. It may have been one isolated person who had a particular health condition. But the majority of them we're seeing are cancerous.
And I was also referencing earlier, obviously, you can't legally screen people prior to employment. But post-employment, is there the ability to, you know, have employees with their annual physicals for us to sort of help be ahead of the conditions they have? Obviously, that wouldn't change or create savings in the short term. But in the long term, if people are, if we're encouraging behaviors and we're having posts acknowledge earlier where there may be health conditions, particularly catastrophic elements.
Catastrophic claims, what you need to do with those is make sure they're in the right setting, an appropriate setting that has a high level of favorable outcomes and costs that at least is managed from the perspective that it's appropriate.
Explain that.
So that's, that's really, okay, so it's called like, it's called a center of excellence. So you have someone who has a cancer, they're hospitalized, or a transplant is another good. We want it in the kind of facility that does a lot of transplants with a high rate of success. Because that way, and they tend to be less expensive as well, because I hate to say it, but they have more volume. So they have a better handle on their expenses.
So we as insurers pay our group versus you. Who makes that recommendation? Are we holding or would we be holding the employee responsible for finding the best? Because a lot of those recommendations come from their physician.
Yes, correct, that is correct.
So I don't know that, well, continue to explain that because to say that you would, the claims would be denied.
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
Not at, not at all.
Because, because they did not go to the best in the market.
Now, let me hear, did you like to add something and then I can?
Yeah, I want to get back to this, I want to go back to this piece. For an example, you've got a pancreatic cancer patient. And then you've got another person that has a mold that has become cancerous. How do you make that determine, I mean, you make the determination, I mean, it's almost, for lack of a better word, it's life and death. What's the, what's, how do you determine if that pancreatic cancer patient, which is going to take a tremendous amount of care and finances, you can cut, you can cut away that skin mold? What do you do about that pancreatic cancer patient? Yeah.
Well, let's talk about one, one of the, one of the, one of the case management that's already in your plan now. You know, there, I would, I would say based on my experience that are other carriers that are more aggressive. I think that's a better way to say it. More aggressive in their oversight of large cost claims. But when I say oversight, the process happens when the physician is ready to admit the individual to a transplant or the surgery for cancer treatment. So the first step is often surgery to remove the tumor in the cancerous cells. Then that goes through pre-certification. That's an automatic rise into the physician level at the insurance companies. Now, your insurance companies employ many physicians who are at the right level of expertise and knowledge to speak with these doctors and to help encourage the movement towards these centers of excellence. So it's not a matter of denial, it's a matter of coaching and promoting, you know, where treatment can take place and what the outcomes and sharing of that kind of information. The insurance companies actually hold tremendous amount of information on outcomes based on different facility and treatment locations. Because they're the ones paying the claims, they also see the outcomes because they have the, you know, the mortality and the morbidity rates so that they can go ahead and judge. There are also many independent organizations that go in and measure against, you know, the different hospitals, against certain criteria to rate them as far as their quality. So all of this is used in establishing what a center of excellence might look like. So you really, we're not looking at trying to deny anybody coverage. What we're trying to do is make sure that they, that we make them aware of. And if we can encourage them to get into these right places.
Can, can I ask you kind of a hypothetical as, as we talk about that? You know, insurance companies, obviously, we're self-insured. So all we're doing is having administration, which to me brings up, the question is, and why it's important for us to constantly be checking behind everybody and having this RFP process is, everything they're doing is a pass through. So at the end of the day, are they really working very hard enough to contain our costs? Or are they going, hey, they're the city of Columbia?
Open ticket.
Yes.
It depends, that's why our first slide, I think, is important to help you identify the programs that are, that are going to be the most effective. Because what they're doing is they're actually doing these programs on their fully insured book of business because they're interested in that format of controlling the cost of that book of business so that it can be competitive in the marketplace. They have programs that they offer, you know, almost on an à la carte basis. So we've asked them to separate these rates and it's all part of our process. The RFP is quite extensive. When we ask them to separate the fees out for these different programs that can be applied to your particular plan. So it's something that we evaluate by, by program to make sure that you have the right ones. And you're right, on a self-funded account, often the employer is so focused on cost, all they want to see is a very small fixed cost, meaning your administration fee. And so they don't add them. Kevin?
That's why, looking at the contract and how that we contract with the insurance company. Make sure that the contract is on in the most favorable basis.
When was the last time that it was, it was, all right, we did the so, the last time, and the, and the time before that had been 18 years, right? 10 years. What's y'all's recommendation on RFP processes? Every two years, every three years, contractually, what's the best way to focus? Because we need to start looking at it that way. Because we've done it twice within 20 years. That's not a good policy.
Three to five years on your admin piece? Because that's how frequently these programs are developed and rolled out and tested. And then stop losses every year. So that's your pure insurance piece?
Right.
We do that every year.
Stop loss pharmacy, you should look at that.
On a yearly basis?
Yes, sir.
So you do a year contract or you do year with option to remove?
You can do a multi-year rate guarantee, but the client has the option to cancel.
Okay.
Without penalty, we'll make sure that the contract states that.
And that's both for stop loss and pharmacy?
Stop loss is always annual.
It's annual.
But the pharmacy, those are typically done on a multi-year basis. So if you take that, the number that I shared with you, you can extrapolate that over two years if you join a coalition.
So these are all, I, I think you can tell, and, and we want to make sure we move on so that you have time to talk about other topics that, that are according to this council as well. But this is a great example of some of the in-depth work and some of the conversations we'd like to have with you over these very topics. Because, you know, I, the, the assumption is that this is happening, but it doesn't happen automatically. And in my experience, an informed client makes good decisions and makes good strategy decisions over the course of time that, and that's what we're here for. We're really here to be your insurance advisor, to open up the marketplace and to show you what's, you know, what's available.
Go back. One of, one of the key things here is that, that your specific stop loss deductible sells for every claimant before reinsurance kicks in, is that $400,000, so which means the city is on the hook for the first $400,000. So if you look in the far, far, far right-hand side here, you have on a side, you have on a lot of claims happening that are nowhere near what the specific deductible is for the city to be eligible for reimbursement.
I think for y'all's benefit, my outlook would be is that we need to be creative, thinking out of the box and leverage what y'all have learned and experienced. Because we want a sustainable plan. What we have is not sustainable, but we need a sustainable plan for our whole community. And the only way that's going to happen is if we're creative.
That's right.
Well, that's why that we wanted to take a look first at where, what was driving the cost up? And what we found is pharmacy. So we think that there's some creativity there to, to put you in a different contract that can be sustainable.
Yeah, pharmacy and claims, obviously, are.
Right, 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 those two. Here's a little bit of the benchmarking that we were able to bring in. You're not going to be able to read this on the screen, it is in your packet there.
Is this the HRA plan?
Uh, yes, this is the HRA plan. You know, what we found interesting is that your HRA plan, which adds up several years ago, they typically had co-pays throughout for both pharmacy prescription fills and also office visits. And HRA plans typically now are going deductible and co-insurance, looking very much like your health savings account, qualified plans. So when we look at HRA plans, the one thing that, the first thing that shot out to me is the fact that you're using co-pays, but most of the other entities, and this is based on Aon's book of business. We have the first three columns are you and your plans. Then we have the fourth column is all companies within our database. But that, that fifth column is public entity, both higher education and government. Now, it's not specific to South Carolina, and I want to bring you up to date that we have contacted many of the local municipalities and we've not received enough data. We did get a little bit from one, so we're going through a public records request. It's not something that we can just ask. We talked a little bit about that as a broker, I don't have the same access into their plan. You might get some as, you know, the head of HR, there might be information sharing. But we can go through public records and obtain that. So it's not quite as, as quickly coming as we would like it. And also, using that information is more helpful as we help you with plan design strategies, which we do believe in, which should come for the 2019 plan year. Because I can say that if we do come to the point of changing vendors for 2018 with the change in the name, the branding, the ID cards, you know, there are going to be differences. That's enough disruption of itself that we didn't want to necessarily race into making some, I hate to call it this, but knee-jerk reaction on plan design changes. I want it to be more thoughtful. And if we're going to use the benchmarking, I'd like to collect enough in-depth data so we can bring you something meaningful and show you what is available, at least on the open records access point. So how you compare with some of the other cities and counties that surround you.
Well, I think from a comparison, I think it is more of information than a comparison. I'm, I'm not interested in seeing what, what other people are doing for a sense. You know, to benchmark, we want to have a plan that's designed for our needs. And I think that's been one of the problems we've had in the past is we've kept comparing with other people. And at the end of the day, we need that plan that fits our needs in a sustainable period.
Well, that's good to hear.
That's actually good to hear. And your culture, because every, each of these counties and cities have their own culture. We work with the city of Charleston, and their culture is different than yours. So we can tell you just from the time we've been here and our work with them over 10 years.
Yes, City of Charleston's been a coronavirus since 2007.
So that focus is informational, it really is more impactful compensation as you compare why people might come to you from another local municipality. It's not necessarily that useful from plan design, although it does help you see where you compare just as far as what others are doing. But I'll tell you that, you know, designing your plan will have more to do with you, your culture, and where you want to take your program and the culture of your program. That's going to be something that we're going to take a lot of time and look at. We had another chart in there for the PPO plans. And I can tell you right now, between these two plans, that your considerations are much more favorable toward the employee than the other plans we compared to. However, these come from other states, North Carolina, Florida, so around the southwest. So I know that South Carolina actually, southeast, I'm sorry. I grew up in southwest, I don't know why, all of a sudden back there. But in the southeast. So one of them happens to be Atlanta. That's, that's a completely different economic standard, so it's not necessarily comparable economically. But you certainly are very generous in that area, and it's, it's a total compensation question. As far as the state plan, that is still something that we're investigating. But what we do know about the state plan is that in order to enroll, you have to be ready to say yes by the September 1st deadline of each year. So I would say this year, if you don't have a full quote packet in front of you, you're too late to look at it this year. But what I can tell you about that plan is, it's a four-year commitment. The first two years, you come in on what we would call a pooled basis. They're, they will give you a rate, and they'll probably look at your demographics. I don't have a lot of details on it, but they're going to give you a rate that will stand for two years. Then they will evaluate that two years' worth of claim experience and set your rates from there. But you're already in a four-year commitment with them, not knowing what's going to happen in the second, or in the third, and the fourth year. So that's, that's a little bit uncertain. And what, what I see on the map as far as who's participating, a lot of smaller municipalities and cities and, you know, locality, school districts, where they're a lot smaller, they're participating in the state plan. That's not to say there aren't some larger that are in that as well. But you will also lose some of the flexibility to design the plan and have it customized to your culture. So for instance, there, right now, there are two plans that are available. One is a qualified high deductible plan, $3,600 deductible. And so that one, you can put money into a health savings account at a bank. And then they have a low-end or buy-up plan with a $445 deductible. So there's a huge difference between those two. Difficult for families to decide, do I fit? You know, if I really need to have more budgeting and I'll pay more per month to get into that $400 plan, your other choice is, if that's too expensive, your other choice is $3,600 instead. So it really doesn't give your employees as much option as it is when we design it with you in mind and help you with the right kind of offering and the right kind of what we call actuarial value difference between each plan, which is something that we look very closely at.
We know the city of Charleston, city of Greenville, and now city of Columbia work with them, and they're not considering the state plan.
So, but we, we can get more information, we've been working with Pamela to get more information on that state plan, and we certainly will give you more of an in-depth view of that so that you know exactly what the offering looks like. But this is what we have so far. Okay, forward strategy. So we can wrap this up quickly here and let you move on. As we said, that we have plans, first of all, to hit on all of the contractual issues that we have quickly identified within your current program. So that's what we're doing right now. So we will then bring, excuse me. We're then going to have an analysis of the pre and post-65 population and some of the options that will have an impact on your GASB liability. And that's in preparation for your fiscal year 2018, 2019. I know that Eric Atwater, our counterpart in the retirement sector, he is currently working on GASB work for you as well. He is going to be available. One of the things that I wanted to, um, throw out there and get your idea on, Eric and I have talked in order to separate these topics out, because there is overlap in your retirement, pre and post-sixty-five, that flows over into GASP. But the plan design work that I do and that Kevin and my team does, um, that actually has all to do and very little to do with Eric and all to do with the benefit plan, insurance companies, and the vendors. So we were thinking of being able to bring some of these topics that we've already touched on today over the course of the next, you know, six to nine months, as we start to prepare for the twenty nineteen renewal and use those as topical discussions at the third Tuesday meeting. And then Eric, with his GASP and OPED discussions, would be at the first Tuesday meetings and separate them out that way. Cause I think you're gonna have a lot to consider on both topics. And I think that that separates them out nicely, but we will work in coordination on anything that is a crossover. So then he has what he needs. So he'll get, he'll get some financial information from us.
And if we decide to pull the trigger?
I'm sorry?
And if we decide to pull the trigger, because we feel like we're in better places to do the plan forward sooner?
Uh, as far as plan design?
Yeah.
Uh, for the health insurance?
Cause it'd be January, January one, right?
January one, uh, eighteen?
Yeah, right.
I would not recommend, I mean, this is my personal, from the experience and my expertise, I would not recommend making any plan design changes this year. Okay? When we looked at the plan, we don't, I mean, we see some things that could be adjusted, but I really would prefer to see your employees settle into a new vendor and look at that. And then we have conversations about how we fit your culture into the, um, into consumerism, into underlying contractual oversight. These are not things that you necessarily do all at once anyway. You do them gradually, and we bring you back up to the current level of what most employers are dealing with. So we're not recommending plan design changes this year.
I think we should leave it on the table. I don't think we should put it off totally. Just being honest, I think we'll have the discussion.
I agree. I agree, full heartedly.
Now, my question is, with leaving you the information on the fifteenth, August the fifteenth, is the next chance we'll have to get before you with the results of the RFP. If we also bring in with plan design changes, it's a very fast turnaround time for your HR people to put it on the open enrollment, um, platform so that they can enroll people.
I didn't get help.
You guys already showed how fast it can work, guys. You already showed how fast it can work.
I, and I, I just have to say this, cause I hope Kevin and Cindy know that I know my counsel. So.
Yeah, oh yeah.
I, I just gotta say it, cause we've had this discussion over the last week, and I was trying to prepare them for this, so.
But, but we all, we, we see plan design changes with contractual design changes also. Because if we can impact how that the contract responds more favorably than the last quote-unquote plan design changes we have to make, such as cost shifting through deductibles and, and co-pays. So, if we can, you know, retard that for twenty-four months, thirty-six months, we would ideally like to do that, but we work for you, so we will certainly keep that into.
I think until we see all the, all the cards, you can't make that decision.
Yeah, but you know, and, and we're seeing, we're seeing the numbers, and also I can tell you, based on our experience in working with many, many clients, we see clients do that, plan design changes and changing vendors. And it creates a lot of disruption and disgruntled employees. So what we're thinking is that.
That's how you roll it out.
Pull off the Band-Aid all at once, is what.
Sometimes it's quicker to yank it off than to sit there and slow-bog it.
You know, what, what I would prefer, rather than getting, now, when we're talking about plan design changes, I am more than happy to help direct you on some of the case management and the underlying provisions that will help you control your claim costs, that we can do along with the vendor. Because actually, part of the offering is to challenge Blue Cross with these other competing vendors with their approach on case and care management. And I'm more than happy to help you put those in place to help your employees and help control the costs. And then we start to work with benefit. Remember, we define plan, design, co-pays, deductibles, co-insurance?
And that's all, excuse me, that's all cost shifting.
That's cost shifting.
So it's, there's, there's only so much that you're gonna be able to generate as far as what the city says in, in actual say. But we will certainly present that to you, and I'm sure that you will.
But we cannot leave this discussion without clarity. I mean, that is why I have sorta asked, acquiesced and, you know, talked to Kevin and Cindy through this a lot over the last, um, couple of weeks, because I real, we need to, either we're all going out in and we're gonna tackle plan design changes over the next several weeks in a very condensed manner, or we're not. It, either we are or we're not gonna do it, be, with the expectation of, of cost shifting or true savings. And that's, and I need you all to be very firm about what you mean by that and how you get the counsel there.
We make plan design say, changes as normally cost shifting through deductibles and co-pays. We just want you to understand that.
And remember, we did that this year.
We just want you to understand that.
We made, we made deductible premium changes last year that are in place this year. So we did do that.
It's all just one part. When we get the whole picture, then we decide which way to go. But I'm just saying, we're not taking anything off the table at this timeframe.
I'm just, I'm just reminding everybody that we did.
And that's fine, but it changes the, it changes the approach to what we cover in a condensed timeframe. If we are intending for open enrollment to happen at a normal timeframe, or may, it doesn't have to happen in October. So I just think we have to be, I just, I'm always honest, and I want you to get what you're asking for. And I've asked them already for what you're asking for. I was willing to shift.
You were reluctant.
They were very reluctant to what you're asking for.
Can we go back to your bottom, uh, reason for not doing what we're asking, what we're suggesting? You seem to be very hesitant about it.
We're very hesitant, because it won't bring impactful savings. It's cost shifting to the employees. We've already addressed with the contractual, um, issues, we found one glaring area for savings, which more than enough will help offset the increase that is likely coming around, you know, January first, as you consider how you're gonna fund the claims and where the revenue is going to come from. And so for those reasons, we prefer to use the most impactful changes. And as I said before, disruption to your employees, I think I remember there was a banner, um, Pamela, it was in your building when we first came in and, and met with you, and the top of the mission for the city was retain talent. And so I know that it is certainly in your mindset to make sure that the program that you have is going to be appreciated and also meaningful to the employees. You, you don't have anything, there's really nothing wrong with your plan design, but changing your plan design is a longer topic for discussion, but it has very little outcome in immediate savings, very low. And so that's, my reluctance is, if we change vendors, that's going to have a huge disruption. We're not changing vendors or recommending a change in vendors unless we see a significant savings or reason to do so. And so that alone is a big disruption, and you're gonna get a lot of noise from your employees.
We're gonna get disruption either way.
Right.
And, and, and nothing we do is gonna, is gonna, uh, allow for significant savings on, on, on the front end. But obviously, this is gonna push whatever savings down the road either way, which we, which we hope, which we hope will be, that's a fair statement, um, um, which we hope will be, uh, more significant. Uh, the, um, I guess what, so what's the downside, other than obviously wanting clear direction immediately today? Um, you know, um, open enrollment is, is, is when we, when we, when we say it is. What's the, what's the downside of, of waiting until these proposals come in, just to at least see where we are? Uh, uh, and, um, please?
Thank you, Mayor. There are some other contractual, um, agreements that the city has that, that we're gonna be looking at, that we're gonna pop off. We think there's gonna be some considerable savings there also. So once it, once we get all of the savings, and let's say that's another six digits savings, and then that will better prepare us to make better plan design recommendations to you, so that you can see the whole financial aspect of it. And then you may not have to make the plan design changes that you thought that you would have to make by cost shifting deductibles and, uh, co-pays.
Yeah, I do have, and I have a question for you, but I do have one area that I wanna make sure that I point out. Contribution analysis and helping you with you, that would be the area that I would take a good, hard look in. That showed up right away on our, our very high-level view on the benchmarking, is that you, you may still be a little bit too generous in that area and may want to reprice or shift around some of the pricing for your plans. So that's the first place that I would look. Um, so my question to you is, what, what does counsel, what do the council members believe that making deductible, co-insurance, out-of-pocket, you know, dollars, which is cost shifting to your employee? What will that accomplish? What are you trying to accomplish with that, is a better way to put it?
I, I don't think we're to.
No one's saying cost shifting to employees. I mean, we're, we're not saying that.
Yeah.
Keep, keep saying that. That's not the goal. The goal is to provide a quality plan at, at a, at a level that's sustainable and, of course, encourage the, the healthier actions by our citizens to help prevent chronic illnesses down the road, by employees down the road. So it's not, it's not to ship costs. I wanna make, make sure we manage that, that language forward. That's, that's not the goal. The goal is to make sure we have a sustainable plan, financially sustainable plan moving forward.
And I would add to it is, you know, I, I get your forward strategy, but I would challenge y'all and say, you know, to me, that's, that's what I expect you to put up there, which is a little traditional in the approach. Yes, you know where to go. You, you know that there's pharmacies. You know that possibly the Aon plan helps us save more. Those are traditional. When I say we have to be creative, we need to go off that page to get to where we wanna be. And so, when I say nothing's off the table, I mean, I, I generally mean that because we're, we're, we're not looking to be traditional here. We're trying to be creative, innovative, so that we do have a sustainable plan. And it's not all about cost shifting at all. I think it's really about managing it correctly for today and tomorrow.
Right. And a lot of those things that are on here, okay, these are the strategies that we'll accomplish that.
There's some of the strategies. There're not all the strategies.
Well, built into these are the strategies.
We're a deep dive crowd here.
Well, that's, that's good. I'm glad. I mean, I think you can tell. I brought you quite a bit of information. And I think when strong minds and opinions come together, we get good, strong strategy as an outcome of that. But it's also, it's a timing issue, because by the time you get involved, you don't wanna rush something. Cause we really are talking about, if we're talking about a sustainable plan, we're really talking about looking at your entire approach to healthcare, which goes beyond the insurance program. Because we're talking about looking at, you know, your wellness program and wellbeing that goes beyond just biometrics and did you walk more? It's a financial approach. It's a lot of different areas. And those not only take time to implement, but they take time to generate. And a poorly presented program like that is actually detrimental, rather than if you take your time and put those in to create that long-term sustainability for your program. And I agree, there, there are things being developed right now that are available as far as strategies that are not up here yet. These are easily the low-hanging fruit. There are other things that are actually being developed as we speak. But they can't be rolled out in fifteen days. That's surprising.
At the same time, the, well, we control the dates, number one. It's our plan, alright? Number two, I would say that, you know, we also have been around long enough that fruit dies on the vine, too. And when you wait and you wait and you wait, then you're too late at the time to get it. So I wanna be mindful that when we talk about on the table, doesn't mean that we're talking about turning the world upside down tomorrow. But if there's an option and we can make it work, we may take that option to get the fruit at its peak.
If I may be ambitious to try to close this, we will look at every option for you. We will think out of the box. We will bring you some of our very creative strategies. And just as we've already identified, some opportunities for you, we will try to do those as expeditions.
There's no doubt. I just want you to know that we are open.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
To the going non-traditional, because for us, it's, 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 it's a longer-term play.
Yeah.
I would, looking at the dates that you have up there, physically eighteen, nineteen, and physically you're nineteen, I just don't think the city can wait that long to make meaningful changes to both the health plan and the OPED and GASP requirements. To me, I don't think it would take that long, especially on the GASP, to make some significant changes that would save us a lot of money.
Well, that's why they're at the top, because we know that that's, that's an immediate address, an issue that needs to be addressed. So that's something, that's something that also the eligibility for your retiree program, that, that's something you can change on anniversary. It's not necessarily huge, but your employee benefit plan for your active employees, that is determined from the January first date. Now, we can also implement some of these underlying cost management programs. Those are easier for us to employ immediately than it is to roll out deductible changes and some of the things that will come from that, because I honestly don't think that's gonna get you the sustainability that you want. And that's based off my thirty years of experience. I, I know what makes a difference in a plan design. Your contract on your pharmacy, that's gonna be huge. We need to get a handle on that and start to control that. There's more than we can look at. I can make that very aggressive. It's already something that I can put on the table very quickly, and that's for future claim cost control. So that I can do. I'm hesitant on deductibles, co-insurance, because that also plays into your wellbeing. I really.
But we're gonna look at those. Thank you.
Kevin promises that we're gonna look at that. But I'm more hesitant in that area, because I'd like to get it more thought. That's my opinion. So actually, if you think about, we have an Aon.
We'll work for counsel.
Yes, we will work with counsel. We work for counsel, and we also have.
One of the confusing things here is that we're working on a budget year two.
Yes.
And by the time we get to January, the city manager and her staff's gonna be looking at a July budget.
Yeah.
And then you got the January health plan that comes in, so we have a small window of opportunity to do it.
Yes.
And I would tell the city manager, I'm willing to meet whatever is necessary to have in-depth discussions about these things, cause I think this is where the city needs to focus right now on OPED, GASP, and help, help the health.
Well, that's part of the reason why that you hired us, and we know that our retirement actuaries are working with your, with your team on the GASP and OPED.
Well, I, I know that the city manager fully prepared you guys for this, and, and for this, uh, response. Um, so what's the will of the body as to how we move forward? I mean, do we wait and see what, what we get, what we, what we, what we get back in from the, um, uh, proposers? Or determine then, or, um?
When is that coming in? September?
September.
I thought it was August fifteenth.
August fifteenth.
Yeah, August fifteenth.
August fifteenth.
We're about two-thirds of the way through it. I had the carriers responding in two weeks, but very quick, and I'm on from them. But we have several, we have several vendors who are interested.
I don't want you guys to think we, we hire you to ask for your advice and then don't take your advice. But I think what we're trying to all, all, also underscores the fierce urgency of now.
Yes.
Because obviously, uh, we're not just talking about, only talking about meeting our, our employees' healthcare needs, which is, which is, which is obviously the discussion here. We're talking about how we balance a, 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 a shifting budget with significant needs, uh, citywide, and how we, uh, we make sure we meet the needs of all the citizens that we have to, uh, represent. What you got, Madam City Manager?
To do what I said to do in first place. Do my staff and our consultant. Um, we'll get you where you need to be. I, I already know. And I, I think what is probably, um, if I can put on, try to put on the hat of Kevin and Cindy, is when they say timing and they're trying to, you know, do what is right for us, they also have to understand that while these discussions are now happening for you with them, you've been having these discussions for quite a long time.
Yeah.
And so I, I tried to communicate that, and maybe I didn't. And so I, I tried to communicate that, maybe I didn't-
No, she did.
I didn't, I, it's okay. Maybe I didn't, um, express that urgency of now as well as I should have.
And we, and we don't want to be opinionizing and pound foolish. I mean, that, that's, that's, that's important. But at the very same time, between now and, uh, a year and a half from now, we're, 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 we're talking about missing a significant, potentially missing a significant saving, uh, as, as well. And, um, and may, and may, and maybe at the, at the other end of the rainbow, there's some significant, uh, opportunities there. We, we, we're convinced there are. Uh, but, um, ready to move. Keep urging things along, Madam City Manager.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank, thank y'all.
You gave us a lot of time to, for us to give you our perspective. And, um, to mirror and ditto Kevin, um, certainly we want to bring you the meaningful savings that are going to create what your desire is, is a sustainable health plan. So that's very much fitting in, in our approach. So, thank you for your time.
Thank y'all.
And we will get you information on the finalists ahead of the discussion on the finalists too. We'll make sure we work with, with you all to get that prepared. Our next item is a longer-waited discussion too, Ms. Herbert, with the disparity study and Columbia Disadvantage Business Enterprise Program update. This is Tina Herbert, Executive Director of the Office of Business Opportunities.
Thank you, Tina.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Um, yeah, we, we are excited about making our presentation today. And we have some special recognition, so, um, we're going to try and move through those very quickly. Um, for those of y'all who can recall, uh, the city managers established a ten percent DBE goal, citywide, back in, uh, January twenty fifteen. And as a part of that, um, OBO developed a supplier diversity strategy, um, recognizing that there are many parts to getting our DBE numbers up. There are internal operations that have to, um, be addressed. There is the, uh, getting information to the DBEs, so they're aware of the opportunities, as well as making sure, once we make them aware of the opportunities, they have the capacity to do the work. Um, and so our seven-point strategy is what we've been working on. Brief update, just where we are with some of the strategy. Um, show the committees, I'm sorry, show the city's commitment, first with setting a citywide goal. And then last year, we did our new CDBE program, which we are happy to talk about today. Um, number two, inform departments, divisions of goals and conduct trainings. We've had two trainings with city staff. Uh, the first one was in, uh, twenty sixteen. Uh, the second one was just last year, I mean, earlier this year on the CDBE. Um, and Erica is going to come a little bit later. Um, that first training in March of twenty sixteen was really crucial because it helped us with data collection and making sure our data is as accurate as possible. Because, uh, bad information in is bad information out. Uh, recruiting diverse suppliers, um, we did our Minority BLC and our Women's Business Opportunity Conference. These, uh, were pretty cool because we invite all of the city departments to come. And purchase, uh, vendors can actually schedule time to meet one-on-one with our purchasers. Um, informed diverse suppliers of bid opportunities with the city. Um, again, we had our business opportunity conferences. Uh, we had to let everyone know about the new, the new bidding system, E-Bid Columbia. And we're now doing, and Angelo is helping us, uh, leading up with Hispanic outreach. We have, uh, worked with a firm, a small Hispanic firm that's really trying to help us go into the right communities and the right areas, because we were really having a hard time with that. Um, and now we actually have our CIP on the website, and I think it covers two years, two years, um, which people have been asking for, for quite a while. Um, and then building the capacity of our diverse suppliers here. A lot of the things we do, um, capability statements, sometimes folks don't have them. The bail team, um, this was a pilot program that we did with Carolyn Sawyer. And she brought together, I don't like the name, but I need the name to remind me of what it is. Uh, so she brought a team with a banker, an accountant, an insurance person, and a lawyer. And they, uh, we were able to give fast-paced, high-growth firms typically at least a million dollars in revenues. They were able to come and sit down with this panel of experts. Uh, they filled out information, they got to review it beforehand. And so they got to get basically information and, uh, coaching from all of these folks. Um, and I don't know the exact number of how many folks we probably had, maybe sixteen or so. Um, but that was a really good program because we were trying to get away from just always startups and entrepreneurs and small firms. But we really have some, um, big firms. One of them, I think, has grossed in nineteen million. Nine million. Uh, and so we have our other programs, MPP, SOP, Small Business Week Conference, uh, Commercial Revolving Loan Fund, um, and our Next Level. Um, developing mentor protege, and we probably have to change this strategy, but, uh, back in twenty fourteen, we made some changes to the guidelines. We're talking about forty percent minimum of projects that go through the program, twenty percent minimum to go to proteges. We introduced the protege lead and the protege-only projects. And then, of course, quarterly reports to city council. Um, we do them just about quarterly. Yes, sir.
On, on that, what's your projected timeframe to move a protege to a lead?
Um, there is no projected time because, and that's a very good question. What we did do with the recent guidelines is, and I didn't have that on here, but we, we did put a graduation component. Uh, because what we have found, um, and Diane is helping us, um, not Diane, Minority Business Development Center Agency, is helping us evaluate the current proteges that we have. What we have found is that a lot of proteges want to be proteges.
But that's not the, that's not the purpose of the program or why it was designed.
Exactly. Um, and I totally agree. We have, the ones that we've tried to focus on, um, and, and I don't mind saying, I mean, in my team, we all know exactly who we, you know, who we're talking about. Um, they may be growing in capacity from the size of the work, but they're not necessarily growing to where they'll be to. And for us, in order to be a mentor, you have to be at five million. Um, and so we have had, I will say, we have had, um, non-minority women to do well and to move into a prime status, but not, um-
Is there a way to create, uh, maybe kind of a, a, another level where it's, maybe it's a collaboration so that, that, the parties can take their strengths together to become a lead? Because if we're continuing to have the same people be proteges, it defeats the purpose of the program.
I totally agree. Um, and we have some of that, Aisha has some deep-down information about men and protege that will kind of help us guide that, um, guide that discussion. But I will tell you, one of the meetings we just had, and we loved it, with, uh, Clint, um, he was not here, really looking at, and you'll see later, when you look at our pool of proteges who are DBEs, it's very minute, okay? And then once you add construction that is lowest bid, if you're not teamed up with a prime or a mentor that's getting work, you could be in the program a full eight years and never get a contract. Um, and so, um, you know, there's a dual focus, you, you know, of course you need to get work, that, that is one way. Um, and you have different folks who will say, but I can, um, grow capacity in other ways. So I can increase my bond and capacity. Or, um, I'm doing scheduling better, or I'm able to do my bids better. Um, you know, those are other ways that we can help. But the design of the program from the city's perspective was to get more money to DBEs.
Right.
So, so we, we-
Well, we wanted to create more leads.
So I'm gonna go ahead and I'll jump to it. So, our meeting with Clint. Uh, we are really discussing, and we met with two, um, contractors about doing an emergency, I mean, emerging protege, um, company. We have pretty much tapped out, in the city, we, we've tapped out. Um, and so what we're looking at is getting a list, and I'm partnering with NAMAC, to get a list of all of those current construction contractors who are not in water sewer, but they're in areas that would easily transfer or grow into water sewer. Now, Aisha knows those things a little bit better than me, but I, I know the big concept. Um, and then what we're looking at is actually designing a curriculum that we, the city of Columbia, would put together and say, you need to do this, 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 this. And if you do these certain things, we feel comfortable. And then the next part is actually to give them projects that they can work on in a training environment, and then be able to give them their own projects. Now, we just met about that last week. Um, it'll probably take some time to develop, but it essentially, we're trying to get, we have two issues. You're trying to get more money to the current DBEs, and then also trying to get more DBEs into the program. Um, so the pipe, the emerging protege is an opportunity to get more in. Um, some of the other things are to help the current proteges that are in the program. But we do have, we're, we do have that, and we're totally prepared for that discussion. Um, so, uh, one of the things we said from the very beginning is that we would recognize the departments who hit their ten percent DBE goal. Um, and so we have a lot of those folks here. I'm gonna ask Erica to come up, just in case I mess up something. Um, but one of the things we realized too, with trying to, um, reach our goal is we have to make sure eternally that we are working with staff and staff understands the vision and what we're trying to do. Um, and so these are our grand champions, um, of the DBE utilization goals. Um, and I'm gonna, I don't know who's here, I don't know everybody by name, I'm sorry. But if y'all are here representing your department, let me know. Um, so the first one is nine-one-one communications, I know. Say it, yeah. Gatherers. I should really know. Um, our city clerk's office. Ms. Erica. Um, the canal water plant is, I don't know about it. Anybody here? Uh, fire. Fire department? I'm just gonna go through them. Lake Murray Plant, mayor and city council.
What are we back?
OBO, OBO. We can pull a detail for you and get it. Risk Management, Business License, Community Development, Collections, Information Technology, Legal, Municipal Court, Public Relations, Public Works, and Traffic Engineering. Any of you all who are here representing those departments, can y'all stand up? Congratulations. Um, we have, um-
You supposed to stand too?
Yeah, I was gonna say- Yeah, yeah. I'm proud of my council. Um, we have certificates for everyone that we'll do outside, but I definitely want to thank y'all. Um, you can say if you want to, but if you have to get back to the, the, the DBEs, I understand that as well.
So now, so nine-one-one?
So before, yeah, I was gonna say, so before we let y'all go, we have three, um, special, we want to recognize the special ones.
Can Ms. Gatherer?
Bless you.
Bless you, sir.
Can you talk about some of the things you did to increase your, just real quick, very brief, Kim, but I mean, I am, so that's very, that's significant, sixty-one percent.
Well, we have a very large, um, vendor that, um, we utilize for our, um, computer-aided dispatch system. So that takes up a large portion, but, um, we just try to seek out and make sure that we're utilizing, um, minority, uh, businesses, um, as a whole.
So the key there is it can be professional services, um, which is, you know, what we were trying to get to outside of the norm, when you think of typical utilization through construction projects, et cetera. Thank you. I mean, I put you on the spot.
Well, and I, I think that was one of the things too, with having the citywide goal, is we've done great emphasis on water and sewer, but we still had all these other departments who had opportunities to get work to other folks. So I did want to recognize, um, our third place, the third highest, um, is Community Development, and that's Ms. Susan and Ms. Shirley. Legal. Is Sheri, oh, I thought, is Sheri here?
Teresa.
Teresa.
Teresa's here.
Well, I want to talk about Sheri, but, uh, Ms. Knox, um, uh, Sheri, she's not here, but let her know. Sheri has to do a little extra, um, because, um, direct pays, direct pays don't come up through our system. It's something that we're working on, yes, and Community Development. So she oftentimes has to manually, um, give us her stuff. So we really wanted to recognize her because she's, has to do a little extra step, but it has paid off in their second place. And then, of course, nine-one-one is our first place. Um, and so what they get is lunch with me. That's all I have right now.
You better ask for the cash.
Yeah, and I will pay for it, yeah. So, um, but we're really happy and thank y'all so much, um, because we know it wasn't easy. Um, and if you have to go, that's fine. But Erica has a gift certificate for you. We do have honorable mention, um, because, uh, our city manager, uh, Forestry, Fleet Services, Support Services, Engineering, General Services, Inspections, and Water Customer Service. Um, and this is, we're still at the beginning of using this data, but just being able to get it and us be able to see where the opportunities are. I mean, what we will find is, um, and I think one of the slides to talk about the fact that it's not mandatory, because some departments just won't have the type of product or service that their eligible DBEs that can do the work, and that's fine. Yes, sir.
Which brings me to the next. If I remember, the part of the program was so that the DBEs then could grow their business outside of just the city work. Have you, have y'all been able to track how the, they've been, how this program has helped them grow outside business?
Um, that's from the MPP, just in the MPP program. And we do, uh, annual, is it annual? Well, they do quarterly reports. Uh, and some of them have been able to grow outside. However, there is a mentality that the city is supposed to feed me. Is that, okay, I'm sorry, maybe I went- I mean, I mean, there are a few companies, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna show some, um, that are doing extremely well with the city. Ms., Mr. Vine.
Uh, no, I was just gonna say, and it, um, are you also maybe sharing the examples across departments? Because I know one of the things, like you were saying, just the mindset of, of thinking where we can go. Because I know, like, with community development and even, uh, PR, um, they've gone to, um, you know, when we get our little promotional items, they've made sure they reached out to, you know, smaller ones because that's a smaller contract, or, or, you know, we've got minority vendors who can do that. I know community development is, um, and, or the, the CDCs have, uh, different yard services and just different things. So I think it might be useful for other departments to see the types of minority vendors that the, the departments that are doing well at are contracting with, so that when and if they have those possibilities or opportunities, then they say, oh, okay, I didn't even think about that.
And that's really the next step of our process is, so now we know where the areas are, or now we know where we're really low, like helping that particular apartment to try and identify some different areas. Um, we're still early in the, getting the information, um, and adjusting and making sure it's correct, but that, that would ultimately be the goal. So we realize that in this particular area, we don't have any, uh, DBE vendors. Well, let's literally put together a strategy to get some more in the system and help that department. Because the other part too is, we are here, our office, we're here to help them reach their goals. Uh, we're not just saying, go reach the goal and you better do it and come back. But we're, we are here to try to help them every step of the way. What I do like is sharing success stories, and I think we probably have to do that. But this is our first time doing our big one, so maybe we'll do like a one-page and send it out and, um, success strategies or something. Yes, sir, Mr. Dave.
I know I stepped out. I came in on the end of, um, the, uh, availability of DBEs. You think you used the term, tapped out. What does that mean? Um, because the, the larger contracts and the, you know, the dollar, um, dissipations seem to be in water and sewer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we had been trying over the years to, um, see what we can do to find local, um, DBEs that could come on as the proteges and then grow. And, and you're right, so they don't appear to be just living off of the city. Where do we really stand on that?
Um, go ahead. Well, so that, that is a part of Aisha's discussion, just looking at the MPP program altogether. But when I said tapped out, I was talking with respect to currently qualified DBE firms that are just currently in our market. We pretty much have just about all of them that are doing city work in water and sewer. Um, and so, um, we can continue to work with them to help them grow, but most of them have been in our program since the beginning. Um, but we also want to start a pipeline, um, because there are a lot of construction folks who can, uh, get into it very easily. Right now, so, an example with our construction projects is, we probably have, I always say we only have one, but I think we may have more than one, uh, minority contractor that's, on a team that's actually getting work. So they're in the program, but getting work is the, yeah, getting work is the issue.
How many of it? Do we know, we have numbers? How many of it, do we know, we have numbers on those that have come back as a prime and actually bid on a contract?
Yes, and Mr. Rickman asks the same thing. I'm gonna double check, did Lad and Shady Grove always were primes?
So we have had discussions with protege currently that maybe they're called primes.
So the answer is no. The answer is none, no.
So we gotta figure out how to get them to the ultimate goal.
And you have to realize it's probably easier in professional services than it is in construction. Because essentially what we're looking at is if you have 10 firms bidding and only one or two of these firms have DBE proteges and then it's a competitive bid, this protege is never going to get the revenue, at least not from this program, just based on the odds. Not unless your mentor is killing it and getting work. Now, that is why we developed Mentor with the protege lead where we actually just directly contract with the protege and protege only. Where we just give the work, we think it's at a level that contractors can do. That's a start.
Just a question then. It's been a while, we've been really trying to push the button to get the proteges connected and then grow. Is there maybe another approach we can take? Given what maybe some other cities have been doing to increase their numbers in that area?
Now, when you talk about numbers, are you talking about the number of firms? Or are you talking about the dollars going to the firms we have?
I'm talking about the firms participating and then really take a look at the dollar value of their participation as proteges and then as businesses coming back and actually bidding as a prime and then being successful at a bid.
So...
Well, Tina, one thing that I wanted to mention too that's been something I'm interested in and I've had some more discussions with staff lately, Mr. Davis, is also about some of our DBEs who are coming into our market from other places. And they are really on a prime level and a mentor type level in maybe in Atlanta or Charlotte or whatever. They have chosen to come to Columbia to invest here and grow their business here and start businesses here and maybe could also really have the capacity already to be mentors and primes. But we also have to still balance that and the importance that you all have placed on local.
The perception of...
Right. And so there's a, there's a couple that come to mind now who have established businesses here in Columbia and may still have not gotten the type of work that I would like to see them get, but may also have the ability and the capacity already to help pull up some other proteges along the way. That was another thought.
And that would, that would actually be, that's probably one of the parts of the program because it is designed that the mentor can come from anywhere. The mentor does not have to be located in our CSA. The protege has to because we're trying to grow our local talent. So we really could have a mentor come from Atlanta, DC, Phoenix. What we have found though is we had to get that CIP listing and forecast because DBE contractors were not willing to come and set up offices and invest without an idea of how much they could potentially compete for. So we've kind of, we're trying to address that too with giving the forecast so that if people are looking to come. But, and I think we just, I really want us to be able to do the emerging protege program where we basically say, we hand, not handpick, but maybe handpick. With Namac, a few DBE contractors, put them through a program and know that once they're through our own program that they're able to work. And they bid as primes. And our protege led and protege only, they bid as primes. They have that opportunity now. So just a little bit of deep diving into some numbers. This is, what we were able to do is pull up the last three years. This would be our FY 14-15. And if you can see here how it works, these are the categories, number of vendors, number of POs, average amount. At the end of the day, these are the dollars that are to these folks. And this percentage, 3.99, represents a percent of total POs this figure.
We're just messing with you.
So the 3.9% is 8.9 million divided by 22, 222. So looking at that...
But is that, just for my, to understand the numbers, is that 223, does that also include goods?
Yes, goods and services.
What's the breakdown, do you know?
I can't pull that. We have the ability to pull it.
Be curious to see what is for service versus goods.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can pull it. I kind of want, I'm gonna skip to, it applies to every, the numbers that you have here apply to everything except utility payments, leases for real estate insurance, banking transactions, salary fringe benefits, and then other nonprofits or entities. Because on here, you, I'm sure someone will say, well, we spent more than 223 million. We did, but not in POs that were contracted out. And I'm gonna come back to this one in a minute. And this is on the prime contracting level. This is what we have contracted with. This is what we have contracted with. We'll come back. And so this would be, this would be FY 15-16. And if you look at this, the dollar amount increased as well as the percentage increased. Interestingly, we spent a lot less money. And then we have this past year that we finished out with 14 million, which is a lower percentage. It's a higher dollar amount that was spent, but it ends up being a lower percentage of the 248 million. Now, what I want to say is this does not include subs. And it doesn't include subs because that is something I'm gonna meet with Terrence with to make sure we have that as an automated process. But what I have been able to do, Ayesha manually keeps these numbers. So at 2014, if you were to add the subs, sub DBEs, we would be at 12 million, which is about 6%. 2015, 2016, we would add an additional 2.9 million that went to DBE subs, which would put us at 15.7 million and 9%. And then for this past fiscal year, we had 1.3, 1.3 million, which would put us up to 6.4%. The reason I'm not giving you those numbers on here is because IFAS prints these reports based on POs generated. We keep our data based on contracts awarded. So those numbers are just to kind of give you an estimate, but it's not apples and apples. So that's why it's not up there, but to give a better idea once you include those. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to know if you look, also our number of vendors is going down each year. And just wondering if y'all have had, if y'all have noticed that and if there's any reason for that. You know, sometimes we hear people say, you know, well, just don't bid anymore because it's too difficult to work with the city or that kind of thing. And I'm just wondering, are we losing vendors for any reason that we could be addressing?
No, that's a good point, and we hadn't looked at that. And we hear the same things. And we have a few of them that we're trying to recruit back specifically that we're hoping will come back and start bidding on work. But no, that's a good point that we hadn't looked at. I do want to compare that however, just to give you all an idea of what the numbers were like when we did the disparity study comparable to those numbers. Oh, right here. 2003, we were at 9%. 2004, we were at 4%. And 2005, we were at 3%. Some people would say that we're in the worst, this is the worst time for DBEs, and it's not actually. So the other thing that just does not include, and this is an important, really, really important point, the baseball stadium. So the baseball stadium would be included in this large number down here, but they partnered with DBEs in the joint venture on the prime level. And the firm was a majority company. Does that make sense? And so because they're not subs, Dr. Lynn and Nate, Ms. Mr. Spels. Because they were part of that joint venture, they technically aren't counted in our numbers as DBE dollars because they were part of the ownership team. Totally different if they had been subs, then we could attract those dollars. And hopefully no one will ask us to try and do that. But it is something to take into consideration. All right, so who's doing well? Highest paid firms this past year, Lad Corporation. They do water sewer work, and so white female company.
Shady Grove is in Georgia, is that right?
No, they're here. And then Chow and Associates. Not a lot of money, but for Chow. What we did do, what I have to do too to make sure these numbers are right, so this is 2016, 2017. If you look right here, if you just add Shady Grove, 9.2, because you have to continuously check this stuff to make it right. But 9.2 million plus 3, 2.3 million is about 11 million. And if you look here under minority female owned, 12 million. So you can tell that those numbers are actually being captured. It's very interesting when you look at Jimmy Chow, his 572. If you look on, if you literally look, that's, you know, that's literally all Jimmy, 576 dollars.
He's on every one of them.
Is that all Chow is?
Yeah. So... So, and then the year before that, believe it or not, we had the same players. No need to, that's just for information so folks can see where the stuff is. Just in general, DBE goal is not a mandatory goal, it's not a quota, anything like that. It's just really us citywide trying to encourage people to spend dollars with DBEs. But we kind of went over what it's not. I want to now bring up Ms. Erica, and Ms. Erica is gonna tell you all about the process that we really use. It was an awesome task for us to be able to collect accurate data and feel comfortable to stand up here and report it. So I want her to talk about how we get to that.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Erica Wade, and I'm gonna talk to you about the DBE reporting process with the reports that we give to all the department heads. First thing we do, the steps that we take to ensure the numbers are accurate. Departmental reports are generated quarterly. We distribute the reports to the department head or the designated, the department head may have chosen for verification. The reports are verified, signed by the department head, and returned to OBO. If they find that there is some discrepancy in the report, they'll send the report back to me. We verify and we do the update, and then we'll generate a new report. Here's an example of what we send out. This is, what you can see is the MWBE PO Statistics Report. It shows the timeframe that, this is just an example. And it showed the timeframe for this example that we used. We went from July 2016 through June 30, 2017. And it showed the utilization percentage for each one of the social groups. And this is a detail of this report. So these are the two reports that are sent out to each of the department head for verification.
So just so y'all understand, we're able to pull up by department every DBE vendor that they have during a period of time to kind of see who they're using, who they're using a lot, who they're never using, and trends. We're not to the point of analyzing the trends yet, but we at least now have the capacity to do that.
Are they prompted at a certain point during the year of, if they have established goals that, or you have forced way through the year?
Erica does the reports, she does it out quarterly. And make sure that, and they send their reports back to me. It's 10%, across the city.
If you totaled that last column, it says percentage total amount. It would tell that department exactly where they at, at that particular period. So the reporting process, the effectiveness of the report, it increases departmental totals. Of course, it helps us to have accurate data in IFAS, and it gives us an analysis of how the departments are actually performing, and it shows which social groups are being underutilized.
And are you able to dig in to, with those folks who are, let's say, who aren't getting the business and figure out why?
Sometimes we just tell you. No, I mean, really, sometimes we just tell you. And it really does depend on the procurement process and what they're looking for. So bids are pretty much real straightforward, professional services. Or, well, we don't have to have more than, what is it, under 5,000? You only have to have one quote. The next step is you have to have two quotes. There are various reasons, but there's more flexibility in the small dollar amounts and professional services, not in straight bids. With BIs, it's just a journey, it wasn't for the lowest.
Okay, this slide shows the effectiveness of the report. Just say, for example, if the goal was 50%. We sent this report out to the department and right now they're showing that their total was 42.86% utilization. So when the, when the department got the report and they did the verification, they realized there may have been some DBs that wasn't, that didn't show up on that particular detail. Then we come back, we verify, and as you can see with this particular department, upon doing that verification, we was able to update IFAS, add those vendors in, and as you can see, their percentage went up to 59%. So if the goal was 50% in the beginning, they wasn't hitting the goal. But after we verified the report, they were over the percentage. The next steps, just like we did today, we want to continue to highlight our high performers, do more follow-up meetings with departments that are underutilizing DBEs, identify areas for growth potential, continue to monitor and provide training, and Ms. Herbert talked about the trainings that we've done in the past, continue to host more outreach events such as our M-Bach and W-Bach that we've had, and also work with the, work with IT on our direct pays because it can be kind of tedious having to manually do those. Now, we're gonna call Ms. Ayesha Driggers, and she's gonna talk to us about the CDBE program.
Okay. So this is just a brief overview of the CDBE policy. And it is a mandatory policy that we have that applies to subcontractors. That's just the definition of what a CDBE, CDBE is, and then the certifications that we accept to determine that CDBE certification. I'm gonna go to this first and I'll go back to the flow chart. But this is how we calculate the CDBE goal on a project by project basis. So we look at the available contractors based off of, the census.gov tells us how many businesses are registered within the CSA. And then we also use our internal system to see which companies are registered in this specific subcontracting area. So the Engineering Division tells us exactly what subcontracting areas there are. Admitting, that's okay. It splits out a calculation for us.
She's a great speaker.
So it's a pretty simple process once you get all the data into the system. And this is specifically for the construction services. For professional services, it'll be a different process because you won't have maybe some of all of these estimates in there. So we're working with our purchasing department to figure out that evaluation process so we can set those CDBE goals for professional services as well. And then back to the flow chart, this just kind of shows what the process looks like when we have a CDBE goal. I know it's really small on here, but we get information about the project so that we can then put it in the methodology calculation. And it requires that our office work closely with utilities, engineering, and purchasing to come up with a goal that we can then include in the solicitation. to come up with the goal that we can then include in the solicitation, so that the contractors know from the very beginning what their expectations are, um, as far as the CDBE requirement. Um, this is just a flyer of an outreach event, that, event that we did, and this brings the prime contractors and the subcontractors together so that they can meet, um, and talk about opportunities. And our plan is to do this with all of our projects that have a CDBE goal, is to have some type of outreach event, so that the subcontractors have the opportunity to know that there's a project out, um, and they can participate. Um, this is our late, the one for the canal we did, um, yeah, April, I think that was in April. And we had 20 subcontractors attend, and we also had the two prime contractors set up a table where they could just meet the, um, subcontractors and tell them what their process looks like, so that they can submit the quotes. Um, in our SOP, we looked at the numbers prior to having the CDBE, and as you can see, 14 and 15 was pre-CDBE, and our DBE numbers are really low. Um, and then with 2017, we, with the CDBE program, um, the methodology actually showed us that the percent should be 8%, but we bumped it up to 10%. It was our very first one, um, and we ended up right at 9.7%. So I think that showed that the calculation worked to show what the expectations could be. Um, and like I said, we ended up with 9.7%. And these were just...
You know, I was just going to add, so we, we wanted to see if we could compare this $40 million project to other $40 million that have been sent through the SOP program. So we pulled two $20 million pro, program, projects, projects? Projects. And basically, the difference is, uh, 162, 164,000 versus 3. something million.
4.3, yeah.
Just by adding the CDBE.
Yeah. So we would say that was a great success on having that policy in place.
How long has our DBE program been in place?
This CDBE, uh, November.
November.
Yeah, this, yeah, this one just started November 2016, this one that was approved by council. And we do have an upcoming train ariation project that we are second CDBE project, and we've set a 10% goal for that one. It hasn't gone out yet, but we went through that same methodology for that project as well, so... The Mentor Protege Program, I know we've talked about this, um, already, but it was, as a reminder, it was developed in 2008, and revisions were done in 2014. The mentors are required to designate a minimum of 20% to their protege. We talked about protege lead and protege only. Just as a reminder, the protege is actually able to bid on that project as the prime, so they're only competing against other proteges. Um, and we're trying to increase our number of projects that are under the protege-led or protege-only. We had two in construction services in 2016 and 17, and we have one, um, in professional services in 2015 and 16. So, I know we're currently working on a project that hopefully can be protege, um, lead or protege-only now, because we think that will really help some of the smaller proteges grow.
And of course, that's a statement we have in the Mentor Protege system.
Right. Um, that's the update of our Mentor Protege, just comparing, um, two years. The protege amount has increased, um, to 48%, but we have seen a decrease in MBEs, and that's what Tina's saying, we need to increase our pipeline of MBEs, because really, there's, there's one that does most of the utility and, um, utility lines and water and sewer work. So, um, it's crucial that we increase that pipeline of proteges. This is just a chart showing the number of proteges that we have currently in the system, and how many are, um, DBEs. So we have 16 under construction service, and five of those are DBEs, one is women, and four are minorities. And then we have 15 in professional service with 11 DBEs. Um, we do see a greater percentage of DBEs in professional services than we do construction services. Tina wanted to go over this matrix that we have?
This is basically...
This last slide just tells, we have a lot of different programs, and this last slide kind of summarizes. We have subcontractor outreach, that helps us get subs. It was designed to help get DBE subs. Mentor protege designed to get, uh, DBE primes. Uh, local business enterprise, of course, local businesses, uh, 10% DBE, that, that, that's just our citywide goal. And then now, we have the CDBE, uh, which again, is designed to increase DBE, EVBE subcontractor utilization. Uh, I, I will note that, you know, if you look here, this is, has the same goal as that. Um, and so, one of the things we want to talk about, and, uh, we've reached this conversation with Clint, is really looking at the effectiveness of the SOP program. Um, and if it's doing what it needs to do, and do we need to make some changes, or possibly eliminate the program? So, um, now that I've said that, uh, I definitely want to thank Ayesha, Erica, Juliette. Great job.
Good job ladies.
I couldn't pull the report if I tried to, uh...
Who's Juliette?
Juliette.
Hi.
Juliette Nelly. Uh, and so Juliette gets all of the, the, the proteges have to submit quarterly reports in some kind of way. Somebody got my email address, and so I keep getting her quarterly reports, and I'm only getting one. And so I'm like, Juliette, please, so I know what she's getting, she's constantly...
What's her position?
Go ahead, stand up. And you can hear.
I've only been here six months, it's not my fault.
She's quiet, she's quiet. And of course, Ayesha, um, I don't know a pipeline from a, anything, so she helps me with that. Um, but I hope y'all noticed, we had our strategic leadership meeting, and, um, Mr. Terrence talked to us about being effective and efficient. And so I hope that our data shows that we have been effective, but it also shows that we are working on, um, being efficient. Uh, going forward, um, we're trying to make sure we count, we still have to get back to counting subs. That's one of the things we still have to do. Um, evaluate the SOP program, uh, try and get more minority proteges, suppliers, DBEs in the system and competing on, for our projects. Um, we do have the, uh, Minority Business Development Center doing a survey to try and address some of your questions, Mr. Davis. Uh, what are we doing for the proteges that are actually in the program and have been in the program for a while? Uh, we're going to be meeting with the MPP and the MBAC advisory committees. There's some suggested changes that we have with some of the guidelines, and we want to get the contractor's perspective, and that'll allow us to get their perspective on some proposed changes. Um, Development Corp., Michael Strange was here earlier. Development Corp., they're not in our IFAS system. Um, and so, you know, that's a, it's just, it's just our, it's just an issue, uh, to determine, do we want to count their expenditures or not? Because they're kind of, sort of, a part of the city. Um, and that's really come from the Development Corp. saying, "I want to be counted." So, um, that's the process that we still have to kind of work through. So, lots of work to be done, um, but we're making progress.
You made a tremendous amount of progress, um, particularly, uh, the forward-facing, I think, um, efforts so that SMW knows that they do have a resource here at the city. And I think, if nothing else, over the last several years, I mean, the amount of programming that you all put out, I'm very proud of. It's very effective and efficient, I think, programming. And I do think that people know in our city that there is a resource, and I know we have a lot of work to do, but for a long time, I do feel like the office itself was more embedded. And I'm, I'm very proud that it's more forward-facing, and I know we'll continue to do good work and...
Team OBO.
Team OBO is doing a great job, and we thank you for the work you've done here with that.
I appreciate it, thank you.
With, if there are no more questions, we can entertain Mr. Mayor's motion for you all to go into executive session.
Mr. Duval?
Are there any additions?
Yeah, I agree, I think, uh, I, I just want, I want to, to, Mr. Rickman, brother, but I want to talk about a potential, uh, uh, deal.
Mr. Mayor, uh, move, we go into executive session for receipt of legal advice to the pending threat and the potential claim of Daryl Rule versus City, Marvis Myers versus Terrence Williams et al. Uh, discussion of matters relating to proposed location, expansion, or provision of services encouraging location and expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body. Uh, Exxon lot in Five Points and Pinehurst. Discussion of negotiations incidentally proposed purchase of property regarding King Street, Blanning Street, Sumter Street, and Al...
Alita?
Alita Street. Discussion of negotiations incidentally proposed contractual arrangements, Capital City Park, HomeServe USA, Convention Center, Bike Share. Look at that, Bike Share takes care of you, doesn't it? Is that in number 24? Uh, receipt of legal advice related to matters covered by attorney-client privilege, uh, the Penny Project relocation, uh, Freedom of Information Act, service marks, potential claims in regard to item 48 of the agenda regarding meters, and item 24 on bike facilities.
All right, uh, motions, is there a second?
That's somebody.
Discussion, Mr. P, P, this question, Clark Colerone.
Mr. Rickman?
Aye.
Mr. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Aye, um, I'm, I'm, uh, upstairs? Okay, and you have any, any particular order you want to take these up, and I'm going to recuse myself of releasing one of these?
Yes, no, sir, with no particular order.
What are we doing?
Would you like us to take that one up first?
We're going up.
What matters?
Make that matter to me.